They'll let us know. Yeah, okay, we'll move on then. We have continued plans. Pillsbury Realty Development LLC Tax Map Number 10 Lots 15, 23, 29 C-2A, 29 C-2B, 41, 41-1, 41-2, 42, 45, 46, 47, 48, 50, 52, 54-1, 58, 59, and 62. This is a public hearing for a formal review of the Woodmont Commons Plan Unit Development under the PUD master plan. And this is continued from a November 14, 2012 meeting. At last meeting, we had some information that we probably will have a series of meetings as things are put into probably bite-sized amounts for us to chew on. And then eventually, we'll be putting things all together. But I think first thing is probably the, I'll have Cynthia go, and probably the procedure and everything, how we're going about this, just an overview.
Actually, if it's okay, I think that our consultant Ted Brovitz from Howard Stein Hudson is going to kind of give an update as to where we are at this point. And then the overview is going to come from the Woodmont Commons Development Team, if that's okay.
Okay, good.
And, Ted?
For Ted.
Thanks. Well, since our last planning board meeting to discuss this project on October 3, I think it was, we had had several meetings with the town and with the development team to go over the materials that were submitted at that point and talk about information and supplemental materials that are needed in order to fully evaluate the project going forward. So, we've come up, we haven't come up with, but the development team has come up with a comprehensive and detailed outline of what ultimately is going to be included in the application and the plan itself in terms of development standards, the details as far as land use plan goes, some of the things, the supplemental materials that are going to be included in the application in terms of physical impact analysis, ultimately a development agreement, and so on and so forth. And I think the development agreement, the development team is going to present in more detail what's included in that outline and a schedule going forward with the planning board in terms of how these different parts of the application are going to be reviewed over the next number of months with the planning board so that we can do this in sort of a manageable sequence of review processes and not get overwhelmed in the overall application, which is obviously very large and going to be very comprehensive. So, I think we've made some good progress in terms of getting down to the details, in terms of what's really needed here, in terms of the materials, and ultimately, a development plan and regulations that are going to guide development going forward if, in fact, it gets approved by the planning board. So, if, that's all I wanted to say. I think Steve had some things he wanted to cover in the outline.
Okay, I just wanted to point out, especially for people listening anyway, Ted Brovitz is our lead for our third-party consultant. Ted, in essence, works for the town.
That's right.
And is overseeing the town's part of this. And you can do all the intros officially, anyway. You need to come up to the bench here to a microphone. And that's, even though we can hear ourselves pretty well here, that's for the people at home listening can hear.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Cynthia.
I'm not sure if this is the best time, but in the letter from Attorney Pollock dated December 5, 2012, on the second page, he writes, "In order to accommodate the proposed schedule of activities, topics, and meetings, and to respect the review clock imposed by RSA 676:41C, Team Woodmont hereby requests an extension of the review clock until April 15, 2013," which coincides with the schedule that they're about to present tonight, and I believe...
Probably, you think it would be appropriate to have the motion now to do the extension?
I think just so we don't forget.
Yes, okay.
Motion by Mary, second by Lynn, and this extends the review clock until April 15, 2013. Any discussion by the board?
Seeing none. All those who have been signified by saying aye.
Aye.
The votes say nay. Extension, the chair was affirmative, and the review clock has been extended until April 15, 2013.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll just do a quick introduction of the team members, and then Steve is actually going to offer our presentation on the developer's agreement, the master plan document, rather. I'm Ari Pollock. I'm with Gallagher, Callahan, and Gartrell. We're Concord Law Firm. I'm here for the Woodmont applicant. Mike Kettenbach, Principal of Pillsbury, and one of the owners of the Woodmont project is behind me. With me is Steve Cecil from the Cecil Group, also one of our planners on the project. Looking back in the room, we've got Terry Shook from Shook Kelly, Rick Chelman, John Michaels, and Tom Goodwin from Shook Kelly. That makes up the team members that we have here this evening. Steve Cecil will be making the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Well, there are two things that we thought we would speak to this evening, and maybe the first thing that makes sense is to just go over the schedule of events. One of the important things for all of us is to know what's upcoming. There's a lot to do. And in the letter that Ari Pollock here had sent out on December 5, you'll find an attachment that is an overall schedule. And one of the major topics that we're going to be talking about tonight is the notion of what the outline, how all these different documents get organized and expanding upon that. And that'll be the largest portion of our discussion. But in thinking ahead and in conferring with the town staff and also with Ted Brovitz and the HSH team, we think that there's a really important series of discussions that need to happen because these things are linked. And we've organized this in such a way that we'll be able to prepare some preliminary briefing documents for you to review in advance. And that's, the idea is a week in advance to have some briefing documents so that you can come prepared with questions, and we can make a presentation and discuss those topics, and then go through a series of topics in important ways that are linked, and I'll show you how. So, the first topic in January, what we're teeing up now is the land use. How does all of the land use components, how are all those land use components put together and understood, and will be provided in the final documents presented for your approval? With the land use topic discussed and feedback accomplished, then the next topic, and we have these allocated as a series of meetings with the notion that we will be getting information in advance, but that we will have largely agenda items devoted with adequate time to look at these, we're going to be looking at the transportation and the infrastructure and the open space and the environment. The important idea here is that we're advancing the transportation impact evaluations and along with the economic impact evaluations for the entire package of concepts here. And we want to make sure and bring those to the table along with what the implications are for mitigation and improvements together as a package. But what, and I think Ted's been very persuasive about this and correct about this, is that it all starts with the land use. Where the land uses, how much of the land uses, how are they distributed, drives where the transportation and the phasing and the economic impacts. So, we'll be looking at that in the following meeting. And then with those in place, we're down into some of the important details, not that they aren't important, but how do we deal with the design guidelines, the specific standards, the approaches, the waivers of existing standards, very, very important, but it's a very kind of a bookkeeping detailed piece of the puzzle that we need to make sure that we cover. And then finally, as we're setting up the packaging of all of these pieces, we're going to talk a lot about the notion of what the project procedures will be after, and hopefully that this is all approved, and think about the submittal of the final documents. So, you'll be seeing sections or packages of components, component topics, over the course of the next few months. So, I'd just probably pause there and see if there are any questions or clarifications we'd like to make. But if you think about it, it's land use, the big issues, transportation, infrastructure, open space, environment, then getting into the details of design standards, et cetera, and then putting the whole package together before you are asked to make some decisions about all of this.
Where would you put drainage in the...
Part of the infrastructure.
Okay.
Chris, first off, I was really glad to see this, sort of how you read, one bite at a time. And before Mary tells me to get next to the microphone, I'll get next to the microphone.
You guys ever watched this show?
I try not to watch myself. I tend to...
Seriously, have you watched this show?
Yes, and a lot of times you don't hear the people.
You don't? So, you can't be closer to...
Okay, everyone, be close to the microphone.
Get closer to you.
Microphone is your friend.
You're gonna bite it.
Thank you.
One question or thing I was going to ask about the process from week, you know, from meeting to meeting, is that there may be items that come up that, you know, can't be answered that evening and need to follow on. Is there going to be sort of a sub-agenda, if you will, where we can have items that are tabled and that we can say, so we make sure we've got the Ts crossed and Is dotted and nothing falls through from meeting to meeting because there's, you know, there's usually a fair span between these, it's gonna be a month between each one, so...
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense to have kind of an open agenda items for topics that might have occurred. And I think the idea is that as various questions come in, I think Cynthia May is keeping track of those questions, making sure that we're aware of them, that we're ready for responses in a timely manner, so that there's not, you're not sitting for four months or two months or waiting to have an answer to a basic question. So, holding that and structuring the agenda would make a lot of sense.
Yeah, I mean, it's good that we've got the main topic for each of the meetings, but I know there may be something that needs to be resolved from the prior one, and I don't want to delay, you know, roll into and then we're doing another extension.
Right.
But I am glad to see the extension request, too. It seemed quite bizarre that we could try and do this in the timeframe that's normally in the ordinance, so just to scale the project. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, I'll just go through the board here.
Good for now.
So, with the upcoming meetings, are we going to be just going through briefings for the most part? Are we going to be asked to approve anything at the meetings, you know, formally approve anything?
I think when it comes to, oh, Ari.
I was just gonna say, you're certainly encouraged to provide us with feedback so that we can shape these documents as they move forward. But the idea here is to build on the subjects as they proceed, double back where necessary, but ultimately get to something that requires a single decision to hopefully approve.
At the end of the process.
At the end of the process and at the end of the schedule that we're laying out. You know, right now, we've calculated the extension to April because we think that's a manageable amount of time to get through these subjects the way we've laid them out. If we go sideways for some reason, we'll have to react accordingly.
Okay. I think it's something as we go along, because there's gonna be decisions need to be made, or like guidance on how we feel, and also the public, because this is a public hearing, and as a public has input into it, it'll all be recorded, and then Cynthia will keep track of it.
Just one more point on that. The idea of the pre-submission, the attempt to submit things one week before the discussion, that was, you'll recall my visit the last time, trying to make sure that you had materials in advance so that you weren't being hit blind with something at the same time as we were looking for feedback. You'd have that week in the interim to read through things, develop your own set of questions, and then if they weren't addressed in the presentation, go ahead and ask them.
Yeah, I guess my only concern is, you know, certain, we're gonna be looking at building blocks, and if we come across something that we don't agree on, you know, it's certainly going to affect the next conversation as well.
I suspect that that will happen on occasion.
Yeah, I do, too. But, you know, as long as we're all prepared for that.
Yeah, I think it's up to us and the public also to let us know what's desirable, what's not so desirable, and I think that all will get sifted through everyone's opinion, you know, from here. On the very last column, January 2nd and 9th, February 16th, 13th, like January 2nd, we'll be getting the information, 9th will be the public hearing.
Right.
Same with February 8th, the 6th will be, the information will come to us and the public also, and the 13th will be the public hearing, et cetera.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. We're trying, we're gonna try to scale the briefing reports so that you can actually absorb them, so that we're feeding a very active discussion without overwhelming everybody with information. And that would be, that's what would happen if we put all of this as one document at the end and said, "Here, what do you think?" So, that's the idea.
The timing is not a coincidence, obviously. What we're trying to do is track the second meeting of the board for each of the months, and that gives us the first meeting as a way to have you all in one place so we can make a delivery of whatever the current thinking is for the next week's discussion. So, for example, on January 2, we hope to have a land use-related deliverable for discussion on January 9.
Do you have anything, Lisa? I'm just a little confused if I'm reading this right. So, you have here meeting, like meeting two, weeks of January, 2nd through 31st, approximately four meetings, but we only have two meetings in January.
That's nice.
If you go over to the left column...
Oh, okay, I'm just not reading it properly. I'm sorry.
Yeah, one of the issues here is we have sort of sub-meetings that lead up to the planning board meeting, so that's a date that relates to the meetings that we would have with HSH or with town staff, and that's something that we're going to be doing offline to prepare for the planning meeting.
Okay, okay.
So, for example, on the land use topics, we have some discussions lined up with Mr. Brovitz and Cynthia May tomorrow, following this meeting, so that we're starting to prep in getting that coordination done, so that by the time that we finish the briefing document to you, we've, to the best of our ability, previewed and made sure that the kinds of topics that would be useful to bring to you are thought through in advance. So, that's notes to ourselves to make sure we're getting those things scheduled in.
Okay. My only other question, and I know you mentioned before that Cynthia has the list of questions. I mean, I know I submitted questions, and I'm sure other people did on this board as well. Some of the questions are gonna, some of my questions, and I won't get specific right now, but some of my questions have to do with our zoning ordinance versus your PUD plan and questions that I have and so on. So, when is there gonna be the appropriate time to answer those questions? Because I don't want to necessarily have to wait months to get those questions answered.
The running list of questions that Cynthia was collecting were delivered to me. We have been working on responses. It wasn't ready for this evening, and I didn't want to be accused of dropping it on you last minute anyhow, so I just assumed, worked with Cynthia and Ted to come up with a more refined list of answers. And then I'll provide it to Cynthia, she can provide it to the group however best. I don't, I don't want to suggest a group email, but something that can get the information out, we have no issue with how quickly it comes out.
Okay.
We also have been working on the list of questions and sort of formulating responses to it. So, at some point, we'll have to get together and compare notes and then present it to the town for a planning board review.
Right.
Okay, so we'll be getting that separate from all these other subjects?
Right.
Okay.
That's kind of the sub-agenda that Mr. Davies was referring to.
Yeah, that's what I, I was following what you were saying, Chris, but I just want to make sure that those specific questions...
Right.
And not just conversation.
They're not being ignored. They've been compiled and...
No, I'm sure that they're not. I just want to make sure that we don't have to wait way down the road to get those questions answered.
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
I think also that as these questions arise, it also helps us structure the agendas to make sure we cover those items very well in the subsequent meetings or in the briefing reports. And I will say that looking at that list of questions, these agendas, we, all these will be covered, and they're all very good questions. So, this is, I think the system's gonna work very well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sean?
As far as the information is being disseminated, will the public be also aware of this information prior to the meetings?
Yes. Once it's given to us, it's public information. We'll have hard copies, it'll also be, I want it up on the website as soon as possible, if possible.
So, the next question that I have, and I'm sure, you know, as this information rolls out and as we have these meetings, we're gonna start feeling a tremendous amount of input from the public. And one, who is going to be the facilitator of that information? How are we going to facilitate the ability to have the public submit questions to us? And I know we have a bunch of questions that have already been submitted, as you stated, you have answers, but I'm sure we're gonna get quite a few more. So, how do we facilitate that, and how do we include those as we move through our process to ensure that the public, not only in the forums that we have here, which is, you know, four or five meetings, but also as they read the materials and they see the presentations, how are they gonna be able to present and submit their questions to this board and to this forum?
Yeah, I'm looking at Cynthia only because she hasn't identified the person who submitted the comment that she's asking us to respond to specifically in what she's asked us to address. But my understanding is that the comments that we've received were from board members and members of the public. Is that true?
Sure.
Okay. So, that might be part of your answer.
No, the public questions are going to be handled the same way. I'm waiting for public questions based on the next series of meetings to start coming in. And yes, there are still, still that group that's out there from the past.
So, the feeling that I got about the questions that we received prior to this event here seemed to be somewhat, in the opinion of people that actually submitted questions, felt like they were mismanaged, and I'm not blaming anyone. They just felt that they kind of went into the ether and really didn't come out, and I know they're gonna be addressed.
Right.
What I'm trying to do, and what my questions are around, is preventing that from happening as we move forward. So, if we have a system that we can, you know, tell the public on, you know, one, who to contact, if that's you, Cynthia, that's fine, how we do it via email or, you know, through an online web type thing, and if we post those questions so that people see the questions that are being, you know, asked, and, you know, so we're not getting multiples, so they see what's going on, so it's, you know, as we move through it, it's gonna be important that the public sees this information and they understand that, you know, their questions are being addressed and that they are, you know, somewhere being seen.
I would say the best way is the way that the planning board and other people have submitted questions via email, making an attachment to an email. They will get taken from the email and placed anonymously in the ongoing list where we're tracking when they come in and when they go to both HSH and the applicant. The majority of the questions that were asked in the past were very specific, and I think that more work has to be done on the part of the development team in order for many of them to be answered, and so that's probably why those won't be answered next week, because they don't have, we don't have enough information to do that yet. So, but they will be answered, and I would suggest anybody that has a question to continue to send your emails, and we'll put them up on the list and send them out to the development team.
And when you say you put them on the list, will they be posted on a public website where they can see the questions that they've asked?
We haven't done that yet, but...
No, actually, we have.
Oh, we have done that.
They're right here as of 4/12/2011, all of the questions that have been asked and who they were directed to, either the planning board or to the Woodmont Commons team are here.
Those were the prior questions?
Right.
Yeah, and I realize those are still there. I'm talking about since that time.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't posted our Excel spreadsheet that shows, you know, the question, when it came in, when it was sent out. And then there's a column for responses as well, so that that information can go up there, too. We're just not to that point yet, so...
So, I guess my question then would be, you know, in lieu of the fact that we have posted some, and we have things that are in the queue, and we have ones that are, obviously will be coming, you know, is there a way to timely get them up there as they either come in or, you know, for, you know, every week we post what comes in or something along those lines, just to keep people informed. And I think it's really gonna help the process, you know, if the public and whoever really wants to see what's going on with this, to see it as, these are the questions, here's the information, and the process feels open and looks open.
Exactly. We're just getting there now, so I'll talk it over with the people who work with me here in this building and see how we can make that happen on a regular basis.
Would you need any assistance or like even volunteer help or something?
I don't know that we do. I just think that, you know, we weren't there yet. The other, that first series of questions is already in the public realm and in the hands of the applicant. The more recent questions have been addressed in the way we said we would address them at the last meeting, I believe, where we've taken them in and posted them and recorded them and just sent them on. And again, they need to do some more work in some of these areas in order to even begin to answer those questions. So, as they're able to do that, but we'll try and keep it up to date, whether it's weekly or every other week. It really, I guess, depends a lot on how much else we have going on, but we'll try and keep up with it because, you know, the master plan is winding down, so we can kind of direct our attention to other things.
Yeah, this is center stage. Make sure John's all set.
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Mary had something, I'll get to you, Chris, or you all set, Mary?
No, I'm not all set.
Okay, I'll do Mary, then I'll do you, Chris.
As far as the questions are concerned, in the past, what we've done when the questions have come in, we have verbally answered them, and they are in the minutes, and we have that documented.
Right.
And so, and part of the answers to these, some of the questions that are, that may be coming in now are, we don't have the answers yet, because we haven't gotten to that part of our plan yet.
Right.
And so, the only concern that I have, I'm trying, I don't want it, I don't want to give the impression, I don't want this to be transparent, but the only point I want to make is that they may not be appropriate at the time because we don't have the answers yet. And so, perhaps simply what should happen is we put up there, don't have the answer yet, you know?
And Mary, just for clarification, I wasn't, I wasn't pointing to the fact that if the question went up, we had to have an answer.
Right.
All I was asking for is the question to be put up, so that if there's six people wondering the same thing, they can go and say, you know, "Oh, that's my question, too," and then kind of cut down the load for starters. But, but under no circumstances was I asking for an answer. And I think to the point of the gentleman here, that, you know, they were talking about formulating the meeting based on the questions that they're getting and the way things are going, I think that might be helpful to them as well if they see these questions.
They are definitely seeing them.
Right, and I would wonder whether these questions are similar to the questions that have already been asked, that if they are redundant. I don't know, because I haven't seen the questions. So, perhaps that's something that should be sent out to the board as well, even if you don't have the full spreadsheet. Send it to Art, and then maybe Art can disseminate it to us, if that's possible.
It is.
I think, yeah, I think the best thing is...
It has to be done regularly, though, so we're just gonna have to make a system of, okay, it's Monday, we're gonna send out all of the questions we have today in whatever status that they are.
Yeah, like one day a week or something to compile what's come in.
No.
Okay, Chris?
I was just gonna respond to a question that John had asked earlier on, which was, you know, who's coordinating? I think she's sitting to the right of me. So, I think one of the meetings, we, you know, I asked that question, and the answer was, you know, Cynthia should be the recipient of any questions from public or board.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, you.
It's okay.
Okay, we'll proceed.
Okay, all right, good. So, we'll look forward to working with Cynthia and everyone on that. The next item is this document that we brought with us and that we handed out, and there are two copies left over on the counter over there. And it is an expanded outline. It's a description of what will be in the documents and how they'll be formulated, looking forward. And as an introduction to this, in the memorandum to the planning board that Ted Brovitz and the HSH review team provided on October 5, in relationship to the completeness review, one of the recommendations that we've very much taken to heart was that the PUD development standards be organized in a manner that would be clear, detailed, well-organized, and make sure that all the standards for development are integrated. And there was a suggestion about a page of suggested framework, and what we've been doing is looking at that idea, embracing it, but expanding it in detail. So, we have an outline that is about six pages long that starts to take a look at what's in these documents and how they're organized. I'm finding that planners really like to talk about outlines and figure out what outlines are, but they're very important because the documents that we're preparing will really be integrated and related one to the other, and we sort of need to know how they're going to fit together overall. There's a brief introduction to all of this on page two, and I'd like to point out just a few of the ideas that are built into this overall organization. Then I'm just gonna talk about the big picture elements and how they're related here, and open up for questions and discussion that we might be able to answer, questions you might have. Basically, the idea is to organize the documents so they provide the kind of studies and additional information to support the planning board's review, including the kinds of fiscal and economic impact studies and transportation impact analyses that were scoped and described in terms of how they would proceed in the application, but their implications and how that relates to this needs to be under... But their implications and how that relates to this needs to be understood. So we've, we've allocated within the outline areas for that. There may be other supplemental information or explanations to support the review and the public understanding that is so important here. There may be a need to reference other documents if there are development agreements about a specific aspect that may occur in the future where there's going to be both town and developer obligations. We want to make sure that in the sense of being clear that those are referred to and, and available for review. Now, the, the heart of much of this is associated with this coordinated and coherent regulatory document that will be used later. We're very thoughtful about the fact that should the PUD master plan be approved, the process of reviewing and approving a host of, of projects and requests over a period of years can become quite complicated. And the document that everybody's going to need to use to figure out if it makes sense, if they're properly linked, if any mitigation needs to be done, needs to be a very coherent guidance document. And what we have done is to think about the fact that when we are finished with drafting all of this, we need to have an operator's manual for the Woodmont Commons PUD. A proposal comes in, what do I do with it now and how do I know whether it's appropriate and what are the rules that are going to be used? So a core aspect of this is creating the operator's manual for the future, for the planning board, for the proponent, for all the different people who will be involved. Part of this and many of the questions are making sure that we're describing clearly the methods for providing appropriate mitigation or necessary improvements that are going to be linked to various phases, stages, or types of development. And finally, and to this point about supplemental information, we want to make sure that the documentations respond to questions that have arisen so that these are all seen. So the basic idea, I'm going to go to the, kind of the key headings and you'll see them in red here. And the, the outline has some, in italics, some explanation of some of the major breakdowns that you can review or I can discuss. But the basic idea is to begin with an introduction that sets the planning context. Many people have been working for many years together to bring the, the Woodmont Commons project to a point where the application has been made. And what we want to do is to make sure that the idea of the planned unit development, of the traditional neighborhood development types and the why, the why behind a PUD planning process that leads to the documents is explained clearly. And the relationship to the underlying zoning, the fact that in effect what the PUD does is to provide a different approach is explained. So it's, it's a general introduction if you want to think about that. But then in Roman numeral, numeral two and Roman numeral three here, you really have the operator's manual itself. And it begins by setting up the general understandings and expectations, the introduction, for anything and everything that would happen within the Woodmont Commons area. Very basic things like the map and the boundary and the areas, what kinds of projects are subject to the PUD master planning, what are the regulatory waivers exactly and how do they get used? How do we deal with certain kinds of things that are not small puzzles? What about it, you've made an approval, then someone comes back and says, well, now I want to put an addition on my building or make a small change. How does that get handled? And then finally, the definitions. It's very important within the PUD that there are some special terms and special ways that you're, you're dealing with things that are a little bit different from zoning, so they have to be defined. The core of the PUD regulations and standards then is the land use plan itself. And there are drawings, of course, but this is where the allowable uses, the use distribution standards, the allowable densities, how all of that gets worked out and shown through a series of diagrams and descriptions matrices. And those are the things that we're working on and looking forward to bringing to you in detail in January. Now, one of the things that's important to think about in the future is there are going to be, in effect, two different levels of proposals that are going to come before the board, sometimes together, sometimes separately. There may be a proposal to build a roadway within the Woodmont Commons to serve a bunch of places, but there's no building yet. There's no park, but the, but the roadway. And you need to make sure that that roadway is consistent with the overall master plan or there might be a proposal to subdivide a bunch of land. It's going to be several different buildings will be there and a park and other uses, but the, but the buildings haven't been designed yet. And so you need to be able to look at those and make sure that it works within the overall configuration of the, the PUD, that the access is going to work, that the services are going to be worked before you can decide whether the sign's properly designed. So there, so the, the item number three, in combination with the land use plan, is how you decide those big level decisions. But once the PUD is up and running, someone might really come to you and say, well, I need to have a special sign. We've got sign regulations. Well, you don't want to have to go back through and have them do a traffic impact analysis on a sign. So you have to have a simple way of handling that kind of thing or a building and the building design and the character of the buildings and how that works on a site. So the idea is to organize all of the standards and regulations so that the kinds of requests that come forward, people can look at that and say, ah, I know I'm supposed to do that and check I've done it or not. And a great deal of thought's been put into this and you can bet that some of these pieces are going to move back and forth, but that's what the thinking is behind this. Then finally, if you look at the, the elements there, we're going to talk about, okay, how do, how do proposals come forward? What, what are literally the forms? How do you keep track of all these different uses? How many, how do you know when there are too much of one kind of a use in a mixed use development? There's got to be a way of tracking that that's just plain different from other zoning mechanisms. So we're going to be thinking and working with Ted, his team and the, and the town, the town staff to think that through before we bring that to you. Finally, there's, well, I shouldn't say finally, but the next step is the mitigation and improvement requirements. For the projects to move ahead, the, the town needs to be assured that there's adequate utilities, that there's access on the roadways. There's going to be some contingencies here. Roadways will have to be built before you can put the certain uses in place. And how do those get paid for? We need to have a clear description of the methods that will be used and how that gets accomplished. So item three there is where we will describe how all of that will work so that you will see that and, and everybody knows how that will work. The intention has been that the, the project will be coming forward with, with methods to make sure that the impacts are mitigated and that the improvements are paid for properly in a proportionally appropriate way. And that's where we'll address all of that. Finally, we, in terms of supplemental documents, and I mentioned this in the front end, the supplemental documents are those kinds of transportation impact studies and making sure the list of abutters is correct, making sure that the transportation studies, the input into your decision and the kind of bookkeeping about some of the key aspects of this are handled. We think this is really comprehensive, but you can see that if we put all of this in a package in front of you and completed, it would be quite a bit. So that's why we're chunking it into important topics to get at and format them properly over the course of the next few months. So I covered, I think, the overall structure of what's in here and look forward to responding to any questions or comments you might have.
Okay. I'll go through the board. I'll actually go the opposite way. I'll, I'll come back. Oh, okay.
We don't have anything right now.
Okay.
What's up right now?
Yeah, okay.
I was going to listen to that catch.
Yeah, yes, I know. We've got some.
I'm all set.
Okay. Mary?
It would seem to me that since we're going to have three public hearings, it might be appropriate to put the, the correct list of the abutters at the beginning of this as opposed to towards the end of it so that you're assured that you're notifying all of the correct people.
Yeah, probably one thing to note, the abutters could change also as people sell and move and all that stuff.
Yeah.
So it's a dynamic thing. Cynthia?
I've made a recommendation that we actually notify abutters because one thing that's really clear is that we've got all of these additional consultants who are now on the team, they all are required to be notified and just to be sure that they've checked all, everything. And I think that I've gotten an agreement from them. So for the, the next meeting, you will continue it to that meeting, but we will also be notifying all the abutters again, just to be sure we're covered. And I think it's just placed there as, as a supplement. It's really an upfront thing.
Then it should be called an upfront thing and not a supplement, don't you think? I mean, it gives a wrong impression for it to be saying supplement.
It's just one of the requirements of an application and it's just being put there for informational purposes. It doesn't mean, they had to do that to get here to begin with.
Mm-hmm.
So, and to me, it's not really a key part of what this is other than at the time, it's a snapshot, so.
The other question I had about was, you said that you, we might see an application to build a road first and then, you know, with the idea that it has to be built to the specifications so that whatever is off that road will be serviced properly by that road.
Right.
But then the, the PUD will say that there are certain specific things that can be in this area.
Yep.
And so that road, are you saying will be good for any one of those specific things that can be in that area?
Right. The idea is that the roadways, when they get designed, set the stage for what happens later. So you need to think about how it relates to the entire PUD, how the traffic will work, the amount of uses. But once you've set that and considered all of that, then if someone comes in and says, well, I'm ready to build a house on that road now, you don't want to back up and say, I wonder if there should be a road there or not. No, the road's already approved. Now you want to figure out, okay, is the house properly designed? Is it really taking into account the open space that it should have? Does it drain properly? And you're not going to know that in advance when you just put the road in. You've got to make sure that all of the regulations allow you to keep going and knit all of these things together.
Right. So my expectation would be that in looking at that road, you would say, the only things we want to have off this road are homes or the only thing we want to have off this road are mixed use.
That's right.
Okay, and I.
And then you set that, you sort of set that standard that that road can carry, for a road, for example, you might say, well, it can only carry this amount of traffic. It, it could be, it could be a, a house, it could be a shop, but it can't be both or it can't be an, an office building. The, the things have to be scaled properly as you move ahead, anticipating the next steps. And then you don't, and, and the same thing with a, a large parcel. Let's say that there's a parcel of 10 acres. Well, is that 10 acres have a road to it? That's fine. It's properly served. What are the kinds of uses? And because the idea is that there's a maximum amount of, of different uses, you've got to kind of keep tabs on that over time to make sure that you're approving the right amounts. But once you make sure that you're okay, that land is developable and there's a road and it's properly serviced, there are other levels of decisions that have to be made. And you're not going to necessarily know all of those in advance or let's say a house does go, go in there and now they want to put an addition on it. Well, is that addition okay? Well, the road's already in, they're supposed to have a house, that's okay. But now you get into that particular question. So it's just making sure that the hierarchy of decisions and the regulations are aligned. That's, it's just trying to think ahead a bit. That's, that's really what it's about.
Okay.
Dana? Tom? Nothing. Rick? Chris?
Further to your comment, I think you gave a good description of what's termed in the ordinance as a master plan, but it's way more than that. It's a combination of ordinance, your master plan and capital improvement plan because you've got to do these things. So I noticed, you know, you, we've got various sections that talk about, you've got the land use with the zone, you know, the areas which we would have the applicable uses in that we've seen before with the maps.
Right.
It's already part of the plan, which I guess we're going to get refined and talk about in the next meeting. But then there's also talk about standards.
Right.
And there'll be varying standards. So you've got a section that talks about standards, but certain standards wouldn't apply to all of those areas, correct? So we'll have some sort of cross-reference.
Right. Exactly.
So that, you know, if it's open space required for one area, it's not the same standard for another area.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
And that's where the complexity starts to come in.
It starts to become, yeah.
Because it can get very dizzying very fast.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's what we're trying to make sure we're untangling and are clear about.
And along from Mary's comment, you, you will have these capital improvements that would have to be done, the infrastructure and stuff like that. So we have some reference to that, that that has to be an enabling thing in order for that area to be.
Exactly.
Expanded.
Exactly. And that's what the section three mitigation improvement requirements. You might be able to design it to standards and it looks good and aesthetically is fine, but if the area's not connected to a sewer line.
You can't build out, yeah.
It doesn't work. So you have to have certain contingencies or conditions that need to be met before you can go, you can keep going. And they're all listed in one place so that you can always check and go back and say, okay, it all meets, but does it, does it have this checklist of things? And if there are improvements, and this is where capital improvements, for example, the, the development entity may really have to build the sewers and roads to make sure that you get back in there before you start designing. Don't, don't ask me to, to review the facade of a house design if there's no sewer there yet. And so that's what that checklist is all about, to make sure the capital improvements and other.
So that will be kind of by reference for the.
That's right.
Okay.
And it's sort of like, so you can just imagine someone comes in and says, well, I want to do these things. Well, okay, well, let's check the roads and the lots and that makes sense, but have you got the capital improvements and mitigation done? Fine. But if they have been done, keep going.
Yeah.
And whether they say in Monopoly, you get to go, go and collect $200 or something, you can keep going as long as the conditions are.
Well, I think we're finally getting down to the detail I always wanted to see in here because that's, you know.
Right.
If T's crossed and I's dotted because there won't be the same group of people here on this board five years from now when there's a site plan that comes before and the staff will need that checklist to be able to go through and say.
Yeah.
Are these good to go or is it a showstopper?
Do you think it's a plan set up in five years?
You'll still be here, I know that, yeah.
Yeah. I think this is not a small consideration in fact because there will be a lot of decisions and a lot of conditions to be met. And if you don't organize it properly, this could occupy a planning board for 10 years with all your meetings and that's not really the point. We're trying to get it all set in advance as much as we can.
Well, just like we get a, excuse me, just like we get a, a site plan now, we've got, you know, a very clear set of regulations and requirements that the, you know, the, the staff go through and they'll, you know, there might be some waivers, there might be some, you know, approved by the staff, not approved by the staff and come before the board. So, you know.
Right.
And without that, really definitive list would be lost.
Exactly. And we would just want to make sure, I think all of us do, that this adds up when you're done though, that you end up with this really well-coordinated, thoroughly planned, extraordinary portion of Londonderry that's, that, that it is all consistently adding up to something really great. And that's the challenge of the, the keeping the, the larger view in all of this.
Yeah. I mean, to dovetail between Mary and, Chris, I, I think this is probably the, the most important part because it's going to tell us really what, what we can do next. You know, this will tell us, you know, they come in with a site plan or something, we go to this, you know, have all these conditions been met. And I think a lot of the questions, you know, that could have been asked in the past and probably will be asked revolve around, I think it's, it all deals with the impacts.
Right.
What are the impacts to me? What are they going to do to Londonderry? What are they going to do to the neighborhood? That's the critical part. And that's where a lot, a lot of, a lot of the concerns are, are right there.
And I think that by pulling that out as a clear section so we can focus on it, so so the methods for measuring that, the methods to make sure that they're taken care of, how does that get accomplished, is explained, and then it turns into a kind of a checklist later on, so that the answers can be met every time they come up in the future in a predictable way. And there will be a lot of the discussion. I think that the traffic and transportation studies that are underway now and the economic studies will be able to make sure that we relate the questions of phasing and locations to a very clear set of ideas about the methods that can be used to do this.
Lea?
Yeah, one of your supplemental documents, obviously, is an economic impact study.
Mm-hmm.
Can you, for the benefit of the folks at home and for us here, can you tell us a little bit about what you intend to have in there?
Yeah. I think, in fact, in the, in the application, the complete application that was submitted on October 3rd, there's a description of the scope and the methodology that's used. And fundamentally, it's taking a look at the, the net fiscal revenue impacts and benefits that arrive with various aspects of the development over time and what the, what the implications are on the town budget services and resources. And relates that, again, back to the kinds of uses and development patterns that are described, the different, the different balances of uses that might emerge through the combination of the uses that are described in there. So that's really what it does. And they're using standard methodologies. This is pretty standard approaches, so that people can look at them and compare them to other communities and how, and how these kinds of things have worked. I don't know, that's a very general, but, but, but we can go back and take a look at, or you could take a look what's in the, the application to describe how that's being done.
Very good, thanks.
John? When I overlay the two documents, your timetable document and the draft document.
Mm-hmm.
The question that I have is, for each of the sections, and some of them are very obvious, for instance, land use is number two, and transportation is three, three, and open spaces is three, four, and design standards are four, three. And that's looking at it very, very quickly, from a, an overlay perspective of what the PUD and what you're going to be addressing in the subsequent meetings. I'd be interested in making sure that we have our bases covered with all the things that are outlined in your draft. And if you could, I'm not asking you to do it now, but provide the board with the overlay information of what's going to be relative to this document here, what is going to be addressed during these dates on this document.
Yeah.
So that, and understand, you know.
Yeah.
This is, this is a very well-thought-out document, but my concern, and the reason for my questioning is, my concern is, are we missing anything as far as what's going to be presented to us? And two, do we have enough time to look at all of this? So that's, that's the reason for my question.
Yes, and I think right now, our answer is, we'll see. We hope to have enough time, and that's why we've calculated the schedule and the extension the way that we have. What we've basically done is taken chapters of this document and put it into a series of words that fit in a box on a table. And so, you know, we don't have the space there, or this docu, this schedule would be six pages also if I told you all the things I wanted to tell you about each box. And so what we've tried to do is just summarize the focus areas, so that the board has a coming attraction of not only what the public hearing discussion will include, but also what the deliverable week before the hearing will include.
Sure. And if you could provide with that, and I think that's fine, as we move through this, for instance, meeting one will be on land use, and that will be Section Two, and any subsequent subsections that will be addressed, or other sections that will be addressed during that land use, if you could provide that.
Yes.
I think that'd be very helpful to have us follow along.
We can do that.
As far as this document's concerned.
Sure.
Yep.
Anything else on the board? Yes, we'll, we'll continue.
Good. Looking forward to the next steps.
Yep, but I also want the public to have an input at this point, and I know Anne wants to talk, Anne, could maybe use a chair right down here in front of that microphone that sticks out, and kind of pull that microphone down so you can sit and be comfortable.
I don't have to sit, I just have a brief question.
Yes.
Um, as I understand it, the first meeting of each month, the information for the second meeting will be delivered. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that will be somehow dispensed to the public online?
Yes, yeah.
I was wondering during the meetings, like, we, we got new documentation today. If there can be slides made up, so the viewing public can also see it?
Okay.
Because I've, I've noticed on, when I watch it, you can't even see, like, what's on the screen, so.
I know from home, but.
Right.
You can't see anything up there.
Right. So I was wondering, so the public can follow along during the meeting?
We could probably try to get them online or something.
We can certainly try to have a more of a presentation prepared. You know, we're going to have this pre-deliverable as well, so we'll have some lead time. The issue for this evening was that the outline document was literally a work in progress through today. And so since we were talking more generally about schedules, we didn't want to provide something that we knew was going to change up to today. But on a going-forward basis, we can do our best to be better about that.
If we have a little bit of lead time, I think what Anne says, to have it up on, like, the website.
Website, or in, even a follow along as we're talking during the, or you're talking during the meetings.
Right. And to Cynthia's credit, she did ask me if I was organized enough to bring a PowerPoint presentation or put it through the rooms network, but unfortunately, it was a work in progress, so we weren't able to do that. In the future, we can put it on the screen right behind you.
Yes, I think that'd be handy for followers anyway.
And maybe larger type, too.
Larger.
Larger size. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Mike Speltz, 18 Sugar Plum Lane. First, I'd like to join the chairman in respecting Dana's wish not to be thanked for his excellent service to the planning board, and certainly that we would not.
That's really respecting that, isn't it?
We would not want to thank him for all the good common sense that he's brought to your deliberation, so I won't do that. I also want to thank John for championing the cause of the, of the public and transparency in this process. I think figuring out a way to get the questions up in front of people is going to help a lot in developing some confidence that this isn't all taking place in the, in the back room. And I hope we'll find a way to sort of fix that gap between April 4th of 2011 and today. And I think by doing that, you can probably save a lot of work, because questions won't repeat, and maybe you can even figure out a way to just say, "Me too" on a question instead of having to hit you with it again.
Yes.
My, my only real comment of substance tonight is kind of specific, but it addresses the first topic you're going to be considering, which is land use. And I noticed, I think it's appropriate in probably Section 3.4 toward the bottom of Page Four of the draft outline, that, and under the open space standards, that you add maybe a 3.4, 0.6, that I would tentatively title, "Use of agricultural soils." We have an extremely valuable asset in that property, and I hope that the team will be able to find a way to preserve as much of those, incorporating them into, you know, high-end city farm plots, or whatever the case might be, but, or working with the town to find another ownership arrangement for them, so that, that, that those, those extremely valuable and rare soils can be, can be preserved. Another place that could be addressed is, and maybe you're already planning it, is in Section 2.2, which is, lists some of the things that are in the land use plan, but doesn't mention agricultural soils. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome. Anyone else? We're going to have a, I mean, this is going to be a very iterative process, we'll be having a lot of, a lot of hearings, we'll be taking sections together, you know, small bits, we'll be putting them together, so there'll be plenty of opportunity, and you can, you know, email Cynthia. And even next hearing, you can bring up some things that we discussed if you have a question on it. So we'll try to get as much as we can up on our website prior to our meeting, which will, I think, help the board to arrive at decisions. And some decisions are probably going to be difficult, difficult ones, we're going to need as much information as possible to make the best possible decision for the town.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, thank you. Lea?
Could I just ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
You should just pound on the table and interrupt me, yeah?
That's okay. Just a question. You all appear pretty confident that you can encompass land use in one meeting. I don't know, I'm skeptical, so my question to you, Mr. Chair, is, if we feel like we need more time, I mean, how does that work?
We can ask.
I mean, besides being here until 4:00 in the morning, I mean, how, how else would that work?
I don't want to be here till 4:00 in the morning, but we, we can ask. I think it's kind of working together, and I think we can, you know, if this process feels each other's needs and be as flexible as possible.
Okay. So we're going to wing it? Okay? That's all right.
So, yeah, we'll try.
I'd respectfully submit that we're trying to do a little bit better than wing it by having a schedule of particular milestones with topics. And if it proves not to be enough time, then we'll understand that, and we can talk about either a special meeting or some sort of an arrangement to get more time available. But what we wanted to do was, one, be respectful of the board's desire to have an end to this process at some point, and, two, not to consume all of your meetings every month. We begrudgingly concede that there's other business of the planning board in Londonderry.
Thank you.
I think it's also important to add that by working with town staff and with your peer review consultants in advance and going over these topics, that we're trying to preview some of the issues that may arise, make sure that we're responding to them, so that they were not being reactive, but we're thinking ahead in scheduling the meetings. So we'll do our best.
Great. Thanks.
Cynthia?
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to offer that I believe the Fourth Wednesday of the month will become available, starting in January, should we need to continue discussions. And what I can do is block those going forward in case land use needs to continue two weeks later, or three weeks, two weeks later, however that works out.
Yeah, it'll be true, two weeks later. Yes, the Fourth, Fourth Wednesday, I know this, this room is, is open, so I think it would be a good idea.
And we don't have to, to use it, we certainly don't have to work just because we know we can use it, but I'll ask Margot to block those.
Yeah, a meeting room where we can meet if necessary on that Fourth Wednesday of the month. We have had special meetings before, as we know, at the beginning of this year, and we have shown flexibility, so.
I think if we spend some time really looking at the master plan before we come to our meetings.
It helps.
We will have, you know, a stronger knowledge, and then they can, I mean, not 360 pages, just that section.
Right. I think it's small, small bites, it's, it can be assimilated into the thinking process. And I think also, this information to the public also, so that they can digest it and maybe help with, with questions.
Mm-hmm.
I thank you, everyone.
Good, thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn.
I was going to ask if there's any other business for the board. If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Only following our schedule, I think we're looking to have this hearing continued until the second meeting of the board in January, which would be January 9.
Okay, very good. January 9th would be.
Then you can adjourn.
I would need a motion to continue.
Slow move.
A public hear, okay. Motion by Dana, second by Rick, to continue this public hearing to the 9th of January, 7:00 PM, right here. Saying no discussion, all those of favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If the opposed aye, if the signature is affirmative. So we'll meet January 9th.